I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Andrew Banowitz.
Here.
Mary Ann Turner, here. Kelly Davis, Charlie Master Birdy. Tim Neville.
Here.
Rich Troney.
Here.
Rob Quaznicki, Catherine Plapper.
Here.
Okay.
There's two ways to exit the facility. We don't have any audience, so it doesn't really matter, but one is behind the audience and one is to the right of the audience, down the stairs and into the parking lot. The town attorney's office is here, and I believe we -- the board will be going into an executive session. I've previously recused myself from the matters of the executive session as well as the 1375 Enfield Street, so I will designate Rich, I guess, to sit in my seat for that portion of this, and I will excuse myself, turn the commission over to the vice chair.
Very good. We have need to go into executive session to discuss litigation with the town attorney, so I need a motion.
I'm moved.
Second. All those in favor? Unanimous?
Going to move on to all business, and at the 5/23 meeting, the Board granted a continuance of the ZBA number 2022-04-141375 Enfield Street hearing to the applicant until tonight's meeting to allow the CEO to visit the property and report back to the Board. Do we need to vote to open the meeting?
Still moved.
For a second?
Second.
All those in favor by a show of hands? The meeting is currently open. With that said, the series is now open. I would ask the CEO to report the result of his visit, just for the record.
Okay, regarding 1375 Enfield Street and the CISA assist on the junkyard issue. From the previous meeting, Attorney Landelino contacted me, and we set upon a date for June 9th to meet at the property. We met at the property. Much of the materials that we saw before and were there had been removed. There was a lot of activity going on during that two-week period, a lot of activity over there, but it was cleaned up. The only thing that stood out really was a Jeep, unregistered Jeep, that he was working on. That was a picture taken, and there's pictures of the backyard attached to the report. So, at this point, the violation itself has been remedied, and it no longer exists. So, the appeal itself is, becomes moot, and there's really no further action unless you see something else in this matter.
So, the only thing we have to do at this point is to close the hearing.
But before we do that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to chat with you two guys, all you folks. I want to make sure that it's on the record. I listened to the, I watched the audio, the meeting, and I take great exception to Attorney Landelino using my name and putting words in my mouth. Please understand that no time during our meeting did we ever decide that that was a business or if it was a hobby. I guess sarcasm needs to be kept at bay for Mary Ann Turner, because that, when he came in front of us, they tabled it, and then they did, what is it called, Rick? They took it off the table. They-
They said that they would comply with-
They come into compliance, okay? So, we never voted.
Right.
We never voted if it was a business, and we never voted if it was a hobby, okay? And-
What?
A hobby.
Hobby, okay, I'm sorry.
Because it is not our place to decide what a person does for a hobby. What's very interesting, and we have, and I'm just a little bit, I want to make sure it's on the record, that this ZBA has never agreed that anyone doing something under their house is considered a hobby, because you will open a precedent that you don't mean to. And every one of you, at some point or another, made the comment to Mr. Landelino, who was running this as if we were in court, which I found a little offensive, that we had agreed that it was a hobby. Please be extremely careful. We did not, we will not agree to that, in my opinion, and I want my name off that. So, I want to make sure that it's on the record.
We'll make sure that it's in the minutes of the next meeting.
Okay, so, my comment regarding the hobby was never voted on, discussed, and should be stricken from the record. However you have to do it, at least make it so it's in the record.
It'll be in the record of this minutes, tonight's minutes, that it was never voted on. As a matter of fact, the appeal was never voted on, so-
Can you be sure that those minutes end up in that file? Because I don't want-
I will.
Do you understand why?
Yep.
Okay, does everybody, okay, so, that's what I'm worried about.
Because otherwise, it didn't happen.
Right, and there'll be a time when we're going to want to go back. And please understand, there are other people possibly doing stuff, even on that street, that are doing businesses. They're not, they're not hobbies. Okay? Anyway, I want to make sure that that got on the record. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So, at this point, for the record, we need to close the hearing. We don't have to vote on it? We have to vote on just closing the hearing?
I make a motion to close the hearing.
For a second? Okay, all those in favor by a show of hands? Issue. Now, we can get Andrew. Thank you.
No, he's him. This should take, like, two seconds.
Do we have to fill out that form?
Nope.
I didn't think so, okay.
Let me hex my other one. I had eighty-five of these, and now I have-
Gave you the short part of the name.
Here we go. I found it. Hello, Andrew.
Let the record reflect that I am back. We're on to new business. Madam Secretary.
ZBA 2020-20610, 27 Paloma Drive, application for a location of a motorcycle dealership. Moms of Enfield, Moms Enfield, Joel Wheeler, applicant Dale A. Bedura, and Diane Waterman. Owners map 57 lot 341 VR zoned.
Is the applicant here?
Do you want me up there?
Please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Name is Juan Scott, 27 Paloma Drive in Enfield, Connecticut.
Okay.
And, yeah, we are here today because the, so, I'm here on the, as a representative for Motorcycles of Manchester, on behalf of Joel Wheeler. And we are here today because he has recently purchased a business in Enfield, and we're just planning on moving along as business currently stands. So, not making any changes, just working on our license for the state of Connecticut.
Questions of the Commission? No? Staff?
The only thing that I just want to address is the previous approved site plan would be the one that's being approved along with the case seven-
Yeah.
-for the property.
And no changes have been made. I confirm that.
Okay. One more call for questions. Hearing done.
I make a motion to close the hearing.
Pretty easy.
Vote?
He's doing exactly what he said he's going to do, in the exactly-
We need to vote to close the-
Oh, well, I can't do that.
Yeah, show, show, all those in favor? Opposed? Abstain? Okay, continue.
The case seven is exactly what, that's why I looked at the previous one. It is for a new dealer, and it is a new license, and there isn't anything that's changed. It's exactly the same. I say we just move forward.
Do we have a motion to approve?
I make a motion. Second.
Okay. Madam Secretary, let's do a roll call.
Yes.
Mary Ann Turner, yes. Charlie Mastaberty?
Yes.
Tim Neville?
Yes.
Who's the alternate?
That's your five.
Oh, yeah, I'm here.
Oh, who'd I miss? One, two, that's only four.
It's only four.
Who's playing the alternate? It's got to be either Rich or Kathy. Who've I got? One, two, three, four. We need one more.
I think I said Rich was going to be the alternate tonight, so-
Yes.
Thank you. We need five.
All righty.
Okay. That's it for me. We're good?
Congratulations. Welcome to the neighborhood.
Thank you so much. I appreciate everything.
Sorry to make you-
We saved-
Ah, that's okay. I have work to do, so it's all right.
Say hello to Diane for me if you see her.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I still see her quite a bit.
Yeah.
All right, so then everyone just, you guys will send me what I need, or email, or something from here.
Approval.
Thanks again. Appreciate it.
So, same business type, same location?
Yeah, and continuation of previously approved site plan.
And say the beginning part again, the site plan?
It's a-
Continuation?
Yeah, continuation of the previously used site.
I think it's 1996 site plan. I'll just put it in there.
Okay, moving on to approval of minutes.
I got to find them, because I had-
May 23rd, 2022 meeting.
I had some changes in there. Oh, I am going to be, no, I wrote on them. I have to, what do I do with them? Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were handing me minutes.
No, but you do need that back.
I do need this to go with this. Which minutes will you want to do first?
We had said May 23rd, 2022, because that's first on the agenda. And what were your changes?
I don't, I can't vote on those. I wasn't here.
Okay, I thought you said you had changes on the other one.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from May 23rd.
Second.
All those in favor?
Abstention.
Abstentions. Okay, moving on to the December 27th, 2021 minutes, which are noticed as 2022 here, but it's 2021-
You're right.
...ones that we've been looking for.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, I was reading over the minutes, and there's still missing information that makes the minutes make sense. I mean, if you were to read these minutes, if I hand them to someone, no one is going to have a clue what we are talking about, again. Okay? So, one of the things is, in the fir, in the town attorney report section, says Chairman LaRosa stated the commissioners had received copies of the town attorney report. What town, what, what report? It should say regarding our written questions, read case seven applications, or something of that nature, so that it's clear. And then, you kind of move along, and then you get to the second page, second paragraph. Commissioner Turner stated that they gave the town attorney a lot of notice when submitting their questions. That's, we gave them a lot of notice about the questions. That's what I was talking to Maria about. And she would appreciate if the town attorney would give them more notice so they could ask questions of the town attorney.
Right.
See, these, if we don't fill in these little minor connections, anyone reading these, these minutes will not understand what we were trying to say.
Sure.
Neither will we.
Right.
So, then, um, this one here, I'm not sure, goes to the, said that they, not move forward. Right, okay, this, this one I can't, I'm not sure what happened without us watching the video again. The next paragraph says Commissioner Turner asked what happens if the commissioner approves a case seven, and it goes to P and Z, and they deny it. Ms. Witten stated that they do not sign it in the case seven, does not move forward, if, if it's a new dealer's license. A case seven doesn't have to be a new dealer. They could be unlimited, they could be general, they could be used. There's all kinds of choices. It's not about new dealer license. It's just license. So, that could be a little bit confusing.
Yeah, I think it was probably new application for dealer license.
Right, right. So, you understand where I'm going here? And then, when, then we go into old business. It says Chairman LaRosa asked if anyone has any questions or concern with the property. Commissioner Turner asked where the applicant is, and what the commission is supposed to do. And Ms. Witten stated that the application is here, and the applicant made his presentation, and the word should be "at the previous meeting," to which Commissioner Turner replied that he did not make a presentation, and actually, the end of that sentence is, "nor did he answer any questions." This is the one regarding the auto buying place that we actually just finished about a few weeks ago. So, I'm finding that the minutes are still too-
Mera.
Thank you, thank you. And so, then we got, and then we get to the page three of four, second paragraph. Commissioner, Chairman LaRosa stated that the commission will take a five-minute recess. There's no explanation of why we took a five-minute recess. We took the five-minute recess because we didn't, we hadn't received all the documents, and Lori Witten went to her office to retrieve them.
Right.
Okay, so, I would like to have this document sent to our secretary with my comments, unless you guys have other things, and I'll write them in, so that we could get the minutes corrected.
So, the corrections would be not to those particular minutes, but they would be noted in tonight's minutes.
Okay, then you'll make sure that a copy of those minutes get put with these minutes that get put into that file.
I will contact the, I'll be sure to, she'll get the recording, look at the tape, to transcribe the meeting tonight, and those issues that you brought up should be in tonight's minutes for the corrections.
But that was the reason, Rick, that we did not vote on the minutes. Wait, now, that's why these are still fuzzling around.
Right, but they had to, they had to post them to comply with the law, so they've been posted, so I think that's what he's, he's getting at, is that our petition will be noted in tonight's-
Right, those, those are there in perpetuity, perpetuity-
Gotcha.
-all right, with the clerk. The new changes will be in tonight's minutes.
Okay, and then you'll just somehow staple them together or something?
And tonight's minutes, when you get those next month, will reflect the changes that you brought up tonight. you brought up tonight.
Because the thing is with time, and I've gone through looking for stuff on file, Rick, there sometimes it's very different, difficult to make the connection to get to where you're going.
I understand.
Do you want this piece of paper or would you rather she just?
I'll take that just in case.
Okay. I don't have a copy, but I'm assuming that that's okay.
That's right.
I'm going to give you this too, since you're standing around.
So we should not be voting on those minutes then, right?
I have no idea. That's where I was going with it.
I think we should vote, vote to approve them with the changes that Marion has made.
Did you guys have any changes?
I wasn't there.
That's right. You're new guys. Well, one new guy, one, right. I guess we have to just be careful with our minutes.
You're right.
They get too, good word, narrow. You have no idea what they said, what we were doing. Okay, so I, yes?
Yeah, is there a motion to approve with changes?
I make a motion.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Against? So now we're on to correspondence and staff reports. Anything else for us, Rick?
Nothing that I can think of at this point in time.
And I'm assuming there's no other business?
Quickly, Yard House.
Yes, I know. They've been slowly taking it apart.
That's what I think they were doing.
Yeah. It's slowly coming down. He's taking his time, whatever. I was going to contact them last week, but I got tied up with some other things, so.
Right. I went back and looked and it looks like they're down to a frame on the first part.
Right.
I rode by and I thought they'd been hit several more times by cars and that's why it was being taken down. I'm not kidding. I was there twice, twice I saw where the post would bend over by a car.
It was hit, it was hit again, but it was in the process of him taking it down.
I wasn't wrong, Marion. I wasn't wrong. I ride by there all the time.
We told them that was one of the things we were worried about.
You're right.
Okay, well.
I'll address it this week.
Okay. And are you heading out to Pheasant Hill anytime soon?
For the third go around, yes.
Thank you.
No other business for anyone else?
We buy and sell cars. What's going on with that one?
You guys approved it, however, he went to P&amp;Z and it was approved and he's been contacted at least one time that I know by email, addressing the fact that the application or the case seven has to be consistent with the approval. Not any relationship to Gail Toyota strictly. We buy cars of Enfield. And that was done, I want to say Matt sent that out last week to him. So he's aware of it. He's just very slow with responding and moving, so I'm going, right now he's in violation. So he'll be given, and the property owner, more importantly, will be sent either a citation or another letter addressing it because he's in violation.
So please explain a little bit what violation means. Does it mean they're going to be fined?
If a citation is issued, then it'll be fined.
Has a citation been issued?
No. No. We, as we spoke before about neither you nor myself were signing off on the case seven until he got the special use permit approval by P&amp;Z. He received that, but he hasn't complied with the conditions.
Right.
And that's the update of the case seven. So he's in violation from the get-go because he can't operate. I know. On paper, he can't operate. Whether or not he's actually operating, I would imagine he is, but, so if I issue a citation, then he'll be, he'll be able to appeal that obviously to the hearing officer, but we'll bring it to his attention again tomorrow.
Okay. I will make myself available to sign his case seven, but it's probably going to be a week before that because, you know, I'm not going to be here for a few days. And I want to make sure that the conditions are somehow connected to that case seven because they're not coming back in front of us.
No, the conditions from the.
Planning and zoning.
Planning and zoning.
And they had some. They had quite a few.
They did.
So we need to figure out a way that those conditions connect to that, I mean, like physically or written and attached or something to that case seven. Just throw a noodle on it and let me know how we handle that.
In the past, what we've done is the conditions of approval have actually been stapled to or made part of the site plan application, so we can probably.
And remember, he needs to have a compliance. He needs to fill out the certificate of compliance.
Zoning compliance upon completion.
Yep. So, you know, when he signs that case seven, come walking in with a certificate of compliance. Every time, guys, every time.
I appreciate it.
Any other business? Hearing none. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'm moved to adjourn.
All right, we are adjourned.